Good evening. My name is Joel Coe and I'm the president of the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. And I'd like to welcome all of you to our community forum tonight with Chair Lisa Cupid. We think that all of you will find this to be both an informative and interesting conversation this evening. But this forum is being organized by our partners, the Allstate Community Task Force, and the Powder Springs Community Task Force in conjunction with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. And I'd like to thank my partners for their friendship as well as their devotion to the communities that they serve. But in particular, I would like to thank Chairwoman Cupid, who has agreed to be part of this evening's forum. As you know, Chairwoman Cupid has a responsibility to govern all of Cobb County and was elected to this position in 2020. She will speak about her first year in office, challenges and triumphs, issues confronting her and her thoughts about work within the community and the county. Now, she will also have a presentation which you will see momentarily that will provide some of her thoughts on various issues that are confronting the county at the present time. And then we'll be following with a Q and A session. I'd like to thank all of you who are in the listening audience, whether you're participating by Zoom or Facebook Live, for caring enough to be part of this discussion this evening. As you know, at the time that you registered this forum, you had the opportunity to submit a question to ask for the chair. We received many fine questions and we do not want any members of our viewing audience to think that this would somehow, your question was ignored or was somehow left off. It may be just a function of the fact that we operate under a time constraint. And so due to the limited amount of time, we may not be able to get all of your questions asked that were submitted to us. And we simply wanted to put that information and disclaimer out there. Now, speaking for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, or MIC for short, we are a nonprofit, nonpartisan organization with 11 board members. MIC has existed since 2001. Today, MIC is involved in a whole host of subject areas, including but not limited to zoning, community gardening, parks, the Mabelton Farmers Market, neighborhood watches, economic development, adopt a mile, and many, many other areas of interest to our community. And I cannot stress enough that what MIC accomplishes is strictly based on volunteer help. There are no paid staff, no headquarters, and no interns. At the same time, we also want to thank our corporate sponsors for their support of our organization because their generosity helps make the work of our organization possible. And of course, we want to turn to our partners and have them speak about their organization. So Dante, you'd like to speak about the Allstate Community Task Force?
Absolutely. Thank you, Joel. And first, welcome everyone to this esteemed meeting. But my name is Dante Philpott and I represent the Allstate Community Task Force, known as ACT for short. And just a, just a quick snippet, ACT, we are a resident-led, community-based umbrella organization here in Cobb County. And we were founded in 2001. And the purpose is to systematically identify, connect, develop, and leverage resources within the community for a sustainable future. So we have several different areas of focus, some of which are community development, economic development, youth and family development. On top of that, you know, there's, there's many, many more. So we, our major focus is in the, is in the Allstate community. And anyone out there, if you are in the Allstate community, we definitely love, love to have you again. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization. No one, no one is paid. So everyone does this as a labor of love out of the kindness of our hearts, just, just simply to see our community, community and organizations do better. And I'll turn it over to you, Elliot.
All right. Thank you. I guess that's my lead way. Again, my name is Elliot Hennington. I want to thank everybody for joining us this evening and happy St. Patrick's Day. Yay. Thank you for taking your time out on this day. We can see some of our organizations in their green. Thank you. But again, I'm part of the Powder Springs Community Task Force. Our vision is to integrate, aim to concern parents, citizens, partner with schools, civic groups, community business leaders, and develop tangible solutions and opportunities to support resources, which will enhance the quality and life of Powder Springs. Our mission is to create and maintain a collaborative effort, empower families, strengthen communities, engage in youth to commit and making differences in communities, and follow it up with live initiatives and opportunities. Again, that's like our partner organizations. We are a host of volunteers. None of us are getting paid. We serve this community to try to make it a better place to live here in Cobb County. Some of our signature events that we've been doing for the last 20 years is the Back to School Bash where we give away backpacks to kids going back to school. 500 bags every summer. Another initiative we have is giving hopes for the holidays where we get toys for the Toys for Top program, giving toys to kids that's underprivileged in order to get toys. So that's something we've been doing for 10 years. You know, some are on activities. We do mentoring groups. We do candidate forms. We just meet a lot. We do town hall meetings trying to introduce the public to our elected officials. So when they run for office, they knew who they elected to put in office. But that's, there's, you know, so many events that we do. But again, we meet the first, the last Monday of every month at, at the Ron Anderson Building at seven o'clock. That's the last Monday of every month at the Ron Anderson Building. So if you're interested in being a part, please come out and join us. All is welcome. Now I have to transition and introduce Chairwoman Cupid, which gives me great, great, great pleasure to introduce her. Not only as our chairwoman, but also as a friend. I've been knowing chairwoman for maybe over 10, 11, 12 years. I don't even want to start counting because I don't want to give her age and my age neither. But I've been knowing her ever since she, before she even started to run for office. And she always have a caring heart for the community. She always was very considerate of what was going on around her, even before she was elected. So again, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our former commissioner, who has been a commissioner for eight years for District Four, and has taken up, where God has given her to move to the next level for Cobb County. So without further ado, Chairwoman Cupid.
Thank you, Elliot. It's a blessing to be with all of you here today and certainly with my friend and brother Elliot Hennington. And yes, we have been at this for some time. And you know, I could say, don't despise humble beginnings. There were, it's a time when there would be a meeting and it would just be Elliot and I getting together. And we just knew that if both of us showed up, at least we'd have half the work because we were both split. And so it's just so nice to see how he has evolved in serving not only the Powder Springs area, but all of South Cobb. And I really just appreciate his service and his friendship and so many of your service and your friendship along the way. So thank you for putting up this update here on the screen. I'm going to do my best to touch on some of the things that were shared prior to this discussion and hopefully leave enough time for Q and A. We can go to the next slide. As has been shared, it's in my initial address to the county. It's been my desire to have a foundation of all being in Cobb. And I could really say that everything that I do ties into wanting to give everyone a voice and a platform here. Some of you who may not know my trajectory, I came to Cobb County by way of East Cobb. And my family was relocated here from Michigan. And I came to go to school at Georgia Tech. I thought I'd be working in cars and manufacturing. And as I went throughout school, I've had the opportunity to live not only in East Cobb, but West Cobb, and met my husband in school. And we eventually settled in South Cobb because we wanted to make the most of our dollar on our initial graduate incomes. And realizing that living in different parts of the county, that not all of them had the same level of investment, but all of them really had the same amount of promise because we're all part of Cobb County. And so I've just dedicated myself to wanting to make sure that the success of our county can reach all of Cobb. And I started doing that as a volunteer in my community and continue that work as chair. But particularly can do so with a level of intentionality, with some more resources in this position and hopefully a lot more influence. And being all in Cobb means making sure that our communities, particularly in the south part of the county, are included as well as we move Cobb County forward. We can go to the next slide. And so I had five end goals to serve as a foundation of wanting to be all in. The first is having a foundation of integrity. And that's not necessarily saying that we're perfect in everything we do, but we want to have that heart of perfection. And that means also being honest with where we are today and addressing those gaps so that we can be our best selves. And being our best selves means being our best county that we can possibly be. I talked about being inclusive and that really ties in well with the all-in approach to serving. Also, it's important to make intelligent decisions that we're not just making decisions for this political moment, but we're thinking about the long term and our future and how we can best set up the county for success for years to come. Also, it's important that, you know, we be data-driven. We're making decisions and that helps us to be considerate of a myriad of factors beyond just our inclination or our feelings, which should not be discounted, but I think should be balanced. Fourth is to have a foundation of being innovative. That if we want to continue to be a strong county in the future, we can't continue to do the same things that we've always done in the past. And so that means challenging ourselves to think of ways or new ways of doing things. And that includes also integrating technology because technology is all so evolving as a spot so that we can serve the county and the people of the county better. Finally, is for us to not be afraid to invest. In fact, that's a foundation that if we want to sustain being one of the best-run counties in our state, arguably our nation, we have to invest. And we will not be able to see ourselves sustain a lot of the accomplishment of our county if we don't invest in our people, if we don't invest in our infrastructure. And we don't have businesses and organizations investing in us. So you're fine. We can go on to that next slide. So I'm going to flesh a little bit up this out. You're getting a bit of a sneak peek into the content of what will be included in the State of the County address, which I will share with the public on Thursday, March 31st at 7:00 PM. And we'll talk again about being all in. But one of the first ways we kicked off doing that is by having this Come to Jesus meeting, not only in the first year of this historical board, it's March. So you know, shout out to us being Cobb County's first off female board. But we had a Come to Jesus moment with our staff to learn that the high level of service that was expected in Cobb was not necessarily reflected in our budget and in our operations. And so for the past six months, we've been reviewing data with all of our agencies and our departments to figure out where our shortfalls are and how we can continue to keep the expectation of our residents and right-size the service levels of our individual agencies. And part of right-sizing is not just looking at where we want to be from a service level expectation, but understanding our, from a population perspective. Last, our census was taken in 2010. Elliot, I think you were a part of efforts we had in the South Cobb community back then to get people to participate in the census. But you know, fast forward from then, we had about 688,000 residents then. Now we are about 760,000 residents strong. And as we are growing in population, we are growing in diversity. And the expectations of our citizens have evolved over that time. So it's very important that we're being mindful, not just from a sheer dollar perspective, but making sure we have the right services to be responsive. And one thing that we cannot ignore is just the evolving politics of Cobb County, particularly with this new board. Certainly, the population has grown, but the politics have also changed. And with that comes, you know, some, I would say, some pressure points. And to just be frank with you, as we are evolving as a county, to know that change is just automatically assumed with our new board and how we are able to articulate that we are still committed to serving Cobb to the best of our ability and that we're committed to serving all. And we've seen some challenges as the county or Board of Commissioners has put forth policies similar to what we've seen in the past. But you know, revamping our code and also now with efforts of cityhood and redistricting, which again, you know, this is not the first time you've heard of cityhood, but certainly has not taken on the life that it has today. And redistricting is something that happens every 10 years, but I have never seen the wholesale changes that I'm seeing in the new districts of Cobb with this iteration, like I've seen in other past iterations of our district maps. And so, you know, to be honest about where we are means that we have to recognize our politics and how that comes into play in everything that we do. We can go to the next slide. Something that's very near and dear to me is just being inclusive. I share with you a little bit of my background of living in different areas of Cobb. And you know, a lot of times we speak about demographic diversity, but you know, we all know that there's geographic diversity in Cobb. And that doesn't always follow demographics. We have areas that are rural to urban in Cobb County. And being able to meet the needs of everyone in between, I think, again, comes with being intentional about making sure we're serving everyone and everywhere. And one of the ways that this board has done that is by funding a D E and I officer, that's Diversity Equity Inclusion Officer for the county. And there have been talks about creating that position in the past, but there certainly was not funding and creation of that until this board came into place. But until we got that position hired, we partnered with United Way to help us have, you know, the conversation about equity. For some, it's an easy conversation. For some, it's a welcome conversation. And to be honest, for some, it's a very challenging conversations I share. We are changing demographically and also increasing in number in Cobb. And very fortunate, United Way partnered with us along with Gas South so that we can have a focus on discussing equity. And that resulted in participation of about 300 or so residents. And after we finished that challenge, we were excited, but we realized we still did not have a great framework in place. And so I had reached out to Georgia State to see if we can have them assess either Andrew Young School, where we are with equity and provide some suggestions for us. And at the same time, United Way came back and said, you know, that 21-day challenge isn't enough. We want to invest in Cobb. And so they have dedicated a consultant for six months to help us provide an equity roadmap for our county. So we have that going on simultaneously with Georgia State, which is great. Because I think if there was ever a time to talk about inclusiveness, it is certainly now. But again, equity is not just dealing with what we consider traditional parts, the traditional aspects of equity. There's geographical equity. And I appreciate Ray Thomas, who's with the Mabelton Improvement Coalition, speaking about the funding that was put aside for the Mabelton area for investment around the Chattahoochee River. Every year, the county decides to put forward one or two projects to go towards our congressional leaders for funding. And when I came into office, I was told you got to pick one or two. And I said, I can't pick two projects. I have four districts. And we need to make sure that every one of them is being considered. And so it has been a tough process. If any of you have been following what's been going on federally with the Build Back Better Plan and with the budgetary process, but we are fortunate that we got three projects selected. And initially, there were six projects, so we added more on top of the four. But they got pared down for three specific projects. And one of those include the, the project that's along the Chattahoochee River in Mabelton off of Discovery Boulevard, which is going to help create a system or network of trails that we typically have seen typified in other parts of the county, more affluent parts of the county. And this is going to be a project that is going to tie in not just Mabelton, but other parts of our region to the Chattahoochee River. But the Mabelton area is going to be the first site for this investment of the Chattahoochee Riverlands as part of that project. And that's due to the shared advocacy of many of you who are part of this virtual meeting. Another way that I've been inclusive is by having a number of interest group meetings. I have put together a business roundtable that meets. There is a group of leaders from the multicultural community that have put together a coalition. I've met with seniors who've been wanting to meet and just different persons that have different interest areas that they want elevated in the county. And that's enabled me to be sensitive to their concerns. In fact, I had a meeting with a number of residents with respect to affordable housing today. And if you have a group of people that are very passionate about a particular matter here in the county, you have the voice and the strength that comes with those numbers. And I want to do my best to make sure that those voices are included in how I'm considering policy. Finally, just collaborative efforts. We've seen those expand. Collaborative efforts is like what's going on today with the groups that are supporting this meeting. And I really appreciate our groups in District Four for all of your work you've done in meeting together. And we've seen collaborations really begin to take off when the pandemic started because I think everyone realized none of us can do the work of trying to meet the exacerbating need alone. And so you've seen that when it comes to our food fleet. You've seen that when it comes to providing evictions assistance, different groups that aren't used to coming together, working together. And you know, there's strength in numbers and that has shown itself true as we continue to work on addressing things, not just dealing with the response and recovery of COVID, but also realizing that we want to maintain the momentum. We have to continue to stay together and work together. We can go to the next slide. Intelligent decision-making. So I just got done speaking about COVID response and recovery. And many of you can recall the height of 2021, when we were just simply trying to get our testing sites up and then trying to get vaccinations in the arms of our seniors and eventually how we rolled that out to the entire population. And with that came accompanying emergency orders that I put in place. And I put this here as part of intelligent decision-making because the decisions that I made to put those orders that were in place were directly a response to data that I was receiving from our public health officials and from feedback from our hospital system. And I know that there's been a lot of angst and sometimes controversy with respect to some of the responsive measures taken to whether it's to distance or put on masks. For me, it was very important to make sure that we were not, we were not burdening our hospital system. We were not going to cripple it. And many of you, like me, if you've experienced trying to go to the hospital for COVID or another matter and not being able to see a doctor for hours, you know, can you imagine those that have had other life-threatening issues? But we've also seen it, you know, with the number of deaths that we've had. We've had too many here in Cobb throughout our state and our nation. And the only way we can get through that is to be data-driven and to lean on our experts when it came to how we responded to COVID. Intelligent decision-making was also made in our budgetary process. We were very fortunate to have a 5% increase in our, excuse me, in our property tax digest last year. And we took care of what I consider meat and potatoes matters. We made sure that we were covering first the pension and healthcare increase of our employees. We addressed cybersecurity. We were able to address merit of our employees because we, like many businesses across, you know, our country, you know, we've been going through a lot of transition and that impacts our ability to service our residents and also our business community. So it was important to retain the employees that we could during that time. But we've also made decisions to reinstitute funding of our capital maintenance program. You know, Cobb County, we're very blessed to have this BLOSS program. And it's nice to get those buildings erected, but it's our general fund budget that covers the ongoing maintenance of those buildings. And it was important to us to make sure that you had buildings that you could be proud of and visit in your communities, that we had roads that could help people have safe and safe and smooth transport across the county. And that we also had pipes that were remaining in good repair across the county. And the only way we're going to be able to maintain those assets to the level of expectation of our residents is to be funding that regularly. And funding is important, but planning regularly is. And we've put forward efforts with strategic planning efforts when it comes to updating our comprehensive plan, which helps to drive land use patterns across the county and also our transportation plan. Finally, with cityhood and redistricting, I can share with you that cityhood is an effort that starts at the grassroots level. You know, it could be one or two people in an area that say they want to start a city and they could end up starting a movement. And so it was something that I was reticent to get involved in at the elected official level because I understand what it's like to be at the grassroots level. You know, I started out as a community advocate. And so I could understand the desire for people to want to have autonomy and a sense of place about their community. But as we started to hear from residents who did not know what was going on, who thought that the county was actually creating these cities and people had a lot of questions, we knew that we had to make the decision of educating our residents. And so we have a series of workshops that are taking place or town hall meetings that will be taking place between now and early elections. Also with redistricting, we knew that things were moving so quickly at the state level that really are, we have regrouped at the county to see what we can do internally to help address the issues of redistricting that can end up impacting the composition of our board. Let's go to the next slide. And finally, to be innovative, I think we can continue to improve things and do things the same way. So people be able to adapt. And when it came to programming, you know, some of you are are very much aware and uses our park systems. And you saw our parks provide virtual programs. Some of you may have gone to some of their outdoor movies and parks. But you saw our senior services providing services that are atypical to that community to make sure that we were being responsive. And you saw that repeated throughout the county. We're being looking at transportation and how we could better invest in transit. You know, Cobb County has had since the 60s to be a part of MARTA and to invest more robustly in transit. And here we are in 2022, still grappling with this decision. But one thing that I did when I came in as chair is I just used the momentum of some other thought leaders across the region who are coming together on a top end 280, which would consider bus rapid transit to connect many cities on the Northern Arc. And I heard that the DeKalb CEO, Thurman, was looking at carrying that down to I-20 on the east side. And so I pushed back and said, why can't we carry that to I-20 on the west side? Because I know that will service our residents, not only who are typified through I-75, which runs through I-285, but we'd also be able to pick up some better access to mobility for our residents in the south part of the county. And I'm fortunate that now that's been included and that would not have happened without support at the state level and our regional level. Finally, with technology, we are utilizing it across our departments to make sure we're being better responsive and that we can better reach all of our citizens. We can go to our last line or our last end goal, which is to not be afraid to invest. We've had a number of businesses investing in Cobb even during the pandemic. And we're very fortunate to see that with technological companies, with others that have moved here, even like Papa John's from Louisville, Kentucky, and TKE, which has opened up its doors in the heart of the battery. And we want to keep that going. And I think is what we do to continue to invest in our infrastructure, invest in our people, which makes Cobb County an attractive place to be. We also have invested in our public services. Again, we've had some issues that certainly have become exacerbated through the pandemic when it comes to housing and food insecurity. And we put forward our dollars to investing in that. And one thing I forgot to mention with our intelligent goals, but I'll put it in investing, Cobb County is receiving 147, or slated to receive $147 million of American Rescue Plan funds. And we decided because we have three years to spend that money down and strategically set the county up for success, that we weren't going to spend that money immediately and then look a year from now and wonder what we did with that and if the county has moved forward. So we tapped into a consultant to help us reach out to our stakeholders across the county. We've had participation of about 3,000 residents and stakeholders to participate in different workshops, to participate in surveys online. And we're going to have them present to the Board of Commissioners next week what has evolved as being the top priority or top priority policy goals for investing those funds. With respect to public safety, you know, in talking about the changing politics and concerns people have around change, there was concerns with this all democratic board that we came in wanting to defund the police. But as they were saying that, we actually invested in our police at historic levels, finally funding the stepping grade program that had been talked about for years prior. And so we want to continue to invest in our officers who hope to keep our community safe, but also invest in those efforts that help to create and strengthen bridges with all of our communities. Employee retention, I spoke about with budgeting, it's important for us to keep the resources that are providing the services that you expect from Cobb County. And this has been a very tough topic for us. We've been a very lean county prior to the pandemic, but we want to be intentional about keeping our employees that have helped to make Cobb County be the best it could be. Again, infrastructure development is very important, our SLOSS programs, thank you citizens for supporting that through the, through the SLOSS programs. We would not be able to have the county that we have without that support. And we're also investing in our environment and sustainability efforts. And we are very fortunate that Cobb County has received the platinum status level for being a green community through the Atlanta Regional Commission, just recently this past year for our efforts for the second county in the metro region to reach that level. Because of our efforts when it comes to sustainability. And that's not saying we don't have more work to do, but I certainly am proud of the work that has been done thus far. So we can go to our next slide, which I believe is just to simply say thank you. I could not be here without you, literally District Four. I could not be here without you and so many leaders who are leading in countywide positions. We could not be here without you. You've made this possible by you coming out to the polls and being engaged. There have been times that District Four has felt overlooked, but I can assure you, it is you that made the difference. For so many of us to be able to break ceilings and open doors for many people to walk through. And I just want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart. Also, thank you for being here today and for having me with you. And I look forward to continuing to serve with you, God willing, over the rest of this term as we take advantage of the opportunity to make Cobb County be as best as it can be and as best responsive to the southwest part of the county as it could be. There's my contact information there if any of you ever need to reach out to me. So with that, I perceive that there may be some Q and A.
Yes, thank you very much, Chair Cupid. Wonderful presentation. I think Dante's going to kick us off here.
And Dante, just bear with me one moment, I'm still here, I just need to check my power, but I'm gonna let you transition, but know that I'm here, I'm going to turn my camera off while I do that.
No problem. So thank you for the, for the wonderful presentation. And I'll go ahead and start us off with the first question that came in from the registrants for, for this town hall. So the first question that we have is, all the feasibility studies show a surplus. Where has the money been going and why can't we afford additional code enforcement?
Okay. That's a good question. And yes, we've had some surplus in the county. And a surplus is funds that are not expected or budgeted for. And we have a budgeting principle in local government, and it may be a principle that some of you apply to just your general way of managing your finances is not to use one-time money for ongoing expenses. So if we have a budget surplus, that's one-time funds that we cannot depend on year after year because we don't know if those funds will be there. So with those one-time sources of funds, we fund what's considered you know, capital projects, investing in our infrastructure, or we may invest that in planning dollars. Or things that we know we only need for a short period of time. Because we don't want to put money towards new positions or new programs or services and come back the next year, not have those resources to sustain it, which would add to great instability within the organization. So I know that can be frustrating. We have put forward projects that you'll see some of the parks that we have in the southwest part of the district. You'll see those being augmented with one-time monies. The intersection of Oakdale and Veterans Memorial. Those are going to be augmented with some additional dollars that we have through the SLOSS program. And you're going to see some other infrastructure projects be augmented with what we consider that fund balance, those additional funds that we have left over from the budgeting process. But we can't put money towards new positions like code enforcement and hire someone here today, not knowing they'll be here tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Chair Cupid. Will millage rates change for unincorporated Cobb homeowners if and when these new cities do form?
So our financing staff has assessed what could be the financial impact to the county should new cities form. And they have assessed that it will be about a point seven mil impact to our general fund and point three eight mil impact to our fire fund. Cobb County is committed to maintaining the same and the high level of service that our citizens expect. So it is certainly likely that there can be some millage impact from that. However, we don't know what will take place during the cityhood votes in May and the one that's going to take place in Mableton subsequently in November. And time will certainly tell with how the county will respond.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you. It's my turn, Chairwoman Cupid. You touched a little bit about this during your presentation. But we have a question here. They would love to hear about any additional plans for public transportation, probably beside what was mentioned.
Yes, so I guess hot off the press, and I'm hearing a little bit of an echo, you may see that there has been a shift in what we will consider for our transit referendum. As I shared during my presentation, the county has had since the late sixties to put forward robust investment in transit. And here we are, how many years later, about sixty years later, still having the same conversation and dealing with the same angst. And seeing our populations grow, our roads become more congested and economic opportunities pass our citizens by. Because they can't access opportunities and work by getting on transit. And businesses passing us by because they're going to communities that have been more responsive. I did not want to be that commissioner to see that ship sail again. And so we have been considering an effort that started with the prior board to better invest in transit. And they had slated for us to do this in twenty twenty two. And to be honest, I wanted to push that through because I did not want to, again, let that ship sail like I've seen it float on by even for the eight years that I've been here. But I realized I can't keep saying I when it comes to that. It's got to be a we thing. And for me to take others with where I think Cobb should go, it simply would take time to be able to get everyone on that ship so that we can take advantage of the momentum that comes with that shared collaborative effort. And so just in recent days, I've been talking to mayors, had a meeting with mayors today, I spoke to engineering professionals and some of our stakeholders across the county. And to not all of our commissioners yet, which is very hot off the press, but we and those discussions have been talking about how we can come together and be intentional about moving a referendum from twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. And so my question was, how will we be more intentional over the next two years than we've been in the last several years? And they were able to provide arguments as to how they believe that can work. And so if if the agenda item stays on for next week, Tuesday, you'll see a resolution move forward for us to look into twenty twenty four. That will still be during my term, certainly towards the end of my first term. But I'm hoping that we can build momentum and make this something that we can get Cobb County is excited about and not just Cobb County, but our region.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So it circles back to me. So next question is, is anything being done to ensure air quality is a priority and traffic doesn't get worse due to the growth in the area?
So we just spoke about transit and as a significant way that we can get more cars off the road. But I also have tasked a couple of our leaders within our organization to see how we can have a better, more robust plan around sustainability. Yes, we did obtain a platinum status for being a green community, but I think that there's more that we can do. And you could say, well, what is Cobb County going to do to really impact the quality of our air? You know, we're the third largest county in the state of Georgia. And you know, Cobb County is even bigger than at least one whole state. And so if we do our part, we can contribute to, you know, reducing our carbon footprint. And yes, that could be through our road systems, but it could also be through other measures that our staff that's dedicated to sustainability and beautification and fleet services can help us with here in the county. And I do know that there is a lot of conversation and work towards electrification of our fleet that we have here in the county. You know, we have a number of vehicles that we use to provide services. And so that's one measure out of many as well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, this is a very specific question, Chairwoman. Is there going to be an improvement to the cul-de-sac at Evans Drive? And is that cul-de-sac up for repairs?
The best person I can encourage you to reach out to is the District Four Commissioner, is Commissioner Monique Sheffield. And she could probably best be able to respond to that by pulling in the District Four Department of Transportation engineer.
Great. Thank you so very much.
Yep.
And also, thank you. My question will probably be leaning towards the same thing in District Four. But that's because of the people asking the senators questions, we want to be mindful and respectful and ask you the questions, Chairwoman Cupid.
Hey, let's go.
No, it's pretty simple. He says, why the new red light at Floyd and Gore Road?
Oh man, I don't know if many of you remember the zoning that we had there for that new development. But residents there were adamant that we needed to do something around traffic and that those leaving Gore Road to go onto Floyd were already having challenges and now we're putting forward, you know, more cars on the road there. And so that was actually stipulated as part of that zoning that the board passed.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. So next question is, are there some specific large-scale initiatives in which the county, county commission is currently working? And which you can share with the audience? And I would kind of augment that and say outside of what you've already shared, is there anything else? Yeah.
You know, I did share a lot. So there's a number of goals that we have set at least for our legislators, which puts, which provides a framework of significant goals through the county. So I'm just jogging my mind to think if I missed anything. Certainly, the top one still remains COVID response and recovery. Strategically using that one hundred and forty seven million dollars in a way that, yes, responds looking backwards, but sets the county up for success that's significant for us. Our budget process is very important, making sure we're providing the best service. Um, transportation and transit, I spoke to you about that referendum. Housing, we have an affordable housing task force put together to address just the dire nature of attaining and retaining housing at this time. You know, with inflation, with so many unknowns in our economy, it's just a tough time. So we may see some policy initiatives come out of that policy area this year. Policing equity, I spoke about. Mental health. This is a source, but also an opportunity. Our Cobb County Community Services Board is tasked with providing services that address those with low and moderate income levels. Mental health services. And that has actually been merged with another service provider because of challenges that the Cobb CSB has had prior to the coming into office. And so we're trying to see how we can best position that you know, body up for success so that they're better serving Cobb County than what we're able to do with our prior CSB. And we're also looking at our American Rescue Plan dollars to see what can we stand up in the gap of while that new that new initiative to merge our CSB is forming. Trying to see, we talked about sustainability. Cityhood, redistricting, I mean, those are the big things right now. I think I hit most of them in my presentation. You never know though, I swear, you think you know, but you never know. So who knows what will happen tomorrow.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Earlier this year, Cobb County was declared to be in a state of emergency. And there was an extension of time for that emergency on February seventeenth of twenty twenty two. First, can you tell us what is a significance of having a declaration of a state of emergency? And what changes does this represent for the county once such a declaration is issued?
That's a good.
What was the basis of that extension?
Thank you. Those are multiple questions. I'm going to do my best to comprehensively address that because I can't remember all of them. But I know you're talking about the state of emergency. So with our state of emergency, it recognizes that there is a health emergency and it really provides some level of caution by what's being discussed in that declaration. Certainly with past declarations, we have been more I don't want to use, there's a term I want to use, but that's probably not the appropriate term. We have been more directive in how businesses can operate with respect to our declaration. That's because, remember, we didn't have a vaccine and it was very difficult to get testing. There were so many variables and unknowns to keep the transmission rate down. Fast forward to this year, we had sixty percent of our population that was vaccinated. And so we were able to control the spread you know, with respect to, to, to that. But only to an extent because we had this new Omicron variant that was out around that time. And so while less people were getting entirely ill, we still had a burgeoning number of ill people coming into the hospital system. And they were operating at, at very severe strain. And I had to be responsive to that because I did not want to cripple our hospital system. Because if I cripple our hospital system, that would be crippling critical infrastructure to our county. And they were having to pivot, move people coming in from, you know, from emergency services from one hospital to another. And again, being concerned about that, being concerned about the level of staffing that they had. And still the people who were getting ill from Omicron and dying, for me, was important to share, yes, there is still a pandemic going on. And I encourage people, please get vaccinated. I encourage people to still take all the other precautions. But with respect to our buildings, that is not something I had control of as an elected official. You know, the buildings come under purview of the county manager, but she looks at that declaration and she responds accordingly. So she saw me say, hey, we have these stats that are showing us that we have these impacts to particularly our hospital system. We still have the spread of Omicron that we don't know where it's going. It was increasing at such a rapid rate at the top of the year. And so we kept that in place until we got our rates down to a level that our public health officials felt like was at less of an extreme level for our community. But our county manager responded by putting in a mask requirement for the county. And also putting in the ability for us to have virtual meetings and to have hybrid meetings. So without that emergency declaration, anytime we had a meeting or somebody wanted to participate in zoning, they had to show up. But if I had that emergency order, I could also encourage the staff to let people call in if they want to weigh in on the zoning matter. And that allowed us to continue to run. If people chose to stay at home because they didn't feel good being out, they could still participate in their government because they could fall back on that emergency order. The county manager wanted to distance people inside the buildings. If she wanted to put in masks, she could say, look, look at that emergency order. That's why we did that. And so for me, it's just, you know, providing some level of caution to signalize to people that there's a pandemic going on and we should be responding accordingly.
And Chair Cupid, if I might ask a follow-up on that question, under the declaration of emergency, does that empower the county to tap monies that otherwise were unavailable? Does it allow them to use police powers in a way they couldn't do before? Does it allow them to change hours of businesses or stop large gatherings?
Thank you. So I can't necessarily say tap into new resources. I mean, that could have been the case if somebody said this only applies if you're having an emergency order for a health perspective. So there are different kinds of emergency orders, right? So there could be an emergency order that's put in place with respect to a natural disaster. And yes, that can allow you to potentially tap into different resources. But there was something else that you said, I think. Oh, regarding events. Yeah. So again, the county manager is responsible for what goes on in facilities. And so for a time, because Omicron was running rampant, she did limit very large gatherings in some of the buildings so that people could distance once they were in it. And particularly gatherings where we knew it would be unlikely that people would be wearing masks. But again, that fell within her purview and that was just in response to her seeing the data and the concerns we were pointing out in the emergency declaration. and the concerns we were pointing out in the emergency declaration.
Thank you so much, Chair Cupid.
You're welcome. You know, it's so hard when you call me Chair Cupid and I'm like, Joel, just call me Lisa, but thank you, Joel.
Well, you do the respect.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Lisa, no. Chairwoman Cupid. No, but you, uh, you touched a little bit on this question when you answered the prior question. This is what COVID-related precautions must citizens who enter Cobb County buildings face when they enter county buildings? What COVID-related precautions must citizens who enter county buildings face when they enter county buildings?
Yep, right now, there is no, um, requirement for citizens to be masked. I am not sure if they started putting the, um, chairs in our meeting room immediately next to each other as they did prior to the pandemic. But right now, you know, it's up to each person's discretion, uh, whether or not they wanna wear their mask in their county facilities. We do not have, um, any capacity restrictions on any of our facilities. So if people wanna have large events, they are free to do that.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, and it seems like we're on, on the, on a COVID streak right now. But, excuse me, the next question is, are county employees required to be vaccinated? And if not, are, are they, are they required to be tested?
Wow, um, county employees have not been required to be vaccinated or tested that I am aware of. And I say that from my level, again, it's the county manager who's, she's, she operates as the administrative head of our organization. But I am not aware of, um, any requirement for such.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you suspended this declaration of a state of emergency on March sixth, twenty twenty-two. What particular factors went into making that determination, that suspension?
Okay, that's good. Um, it was the CDC guidance had changed with respect to how they were advising, um, you know, the public and organizations with respect to the mask requirement. They changed moving from the level of transmission numbers to, now if you go on their website, they have this categorization. If you are in a red, yellow, green, moderate, severe impact of COVID, if you're in the red, you take these precautions. If you're yellow, you take these precautions. And so I looked and saw Cobb County was in the yellow and we followed their guidelines accordingly. And it really put a lot of the onus on people having that individual discretion on how, um, they would wear masks and distance. Uh, and, um, because of that guidance, um, that contributed to me lifting the, um, the order as well as the impact on our hospitals and, uh, and, um, the impact on our public health officials who are telling me that they felt comfortable in us, um, no longer keeping that emergency order in place.
Wonderful, thank you so very much.
Yep, thank you.
I think we get ready to wind down, seeing like this might be the last question. Um, you recently host a meeting of those county, of those county leaders from several local metro Atlantic counties. Specifically that informed, specifically the information or takeaways did you learn from that meeting that you felt like will help you to enhance your job as chair here in the county?
Thank you for asking, and that's part of being inclusive as well. I'm very fortunate to, um, have some very thoughtful thought leaders across the region. And this certainly was not something that was initiated, that I initiated. Um, our Fulton County Chair brought us together during, um, I believe the first half of my first year in office. And we decided that the top five chairs of the largest or the chairs of the largest, um, counties would continue to meet so that we can learn from each other. Um, we can partner with each other and we can support one another. And, um, that was probably the fifth meeting that we had of us convening. And it's just been a powerful experience. Um, during the meeting that I had, I talked with them about our initiative with the Atlanta, with, you know, with Deloitte and our American Rescue Plan funds. They spoke about what they're doing. And so if there are any project considerations that we didn't consider, we can utilize them as an example. Um, we also had the ATL, which is a regional body regarding transit come and address the group. And they talked to us about federal dollars that we could all be tapping into for regional projects and county projects, but they wanted us thinking as a region. I'm trying to see what else was discussed. We also discussed cityhood and redistricting. This is not something that's unique to Cobb County. There are other, um, counties in the metro area that have gone through having new cities developed that are going through redistricting. And so we're able to speak through that so that they can, you know, advise me on what their experience has been. And we could talk through how we're gonna deal with those matters moving forward. And so, yes, it's a great opportunity to learn from one another, to showcase Cobb, to showcase all that we're doing. But it's been a wonderful support network as well.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. Based on that time, Dante, I believe you got a chance for, time for another question.
All right.
All right, well, let's see. All right, so this is probably a hot topic now. So gas prices are, are increasing. And this is causing a great deal of stress for the residents of the state as well as the county. So are there any fuel-related fees that you are empowered to waive in which would afford, uh, county residents some temporary relief? And can the collection of Sbloth-related taxes be temporarily suspended?
That is very interesting. So I do not know if you can suspend Sbloth. There's so many restrictions on Sbloth that, you know, you're required to do what you, as unlikely we'll be able to stop collecting Sbloth because we went out to the voters to vote on Sbloth. And so, I mean, we are limited in doing anything that veers course from what was stated in the Sbloth program. But I can't say no with a hundred percent assurance. That is something I'd have to go back and ask, just again, from past experiences. It just seems unlikely at first blush. Um, you know, I have some power as chair. I do not have the power to waive any gas tax. But it is something that I believe that the governor and the legislature have, has supported quite recently to relax some of the state gas tax that you're paying at the pump. And so, um, I, I perceive that should go into effect soon if it hasn't already.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Well, um, Chairwoman Cupid, I, I think this is probably beginning to end of our program this evening. And of course, we cannot thank you enough, uh, for being here with us. I know you're extremely busy trying to cover all quarters of the county, providing leadership. And we thank you for taking that time out, I know your time is very valuable. Um, and of course, appreciate your very thoughtful answers to all these questions that the citizens have submitted to us that we've been posing to you in turn. Um, that's, that's very wonderful, thank you for doing that and appreciate that. Um, of course, as always, we thank my partners here, uh, with Powder Springs as well as the All-Stell Community Task Force. I also wanna recognize the wonderful, the help folks we've got here like Michelle and Chandrika, without whom these four would not even be possible because they have the IT expertise that allows this to be, to be done. And of course, I wanna thank all of you out there on Facebook, uh, Facebook world as well as on Zoom. You care enough by the community to actually tune in and listen to what we're covering this evening. And we thank you for all of that and for the questions you've submitted. Um, and I think with that, I will turn the, the program over to our colleagues. Right?
Well, good evening, uh, everyone. Thank you, Joel. I appreciate the opportunity to say a few words. And, um, first and foremost, I wanna thank, uh, Commissioner, uh, Madam Chair. I just wanna thank you for, for an excellent presentation and, uh, and your graciousness in how you handle, uh, the questions. So, uh, thank you for that. I love your theme, uh, All, All In. And, you know, in, uh, at Mick, we have a saying, uh, one Mayberton, stronger together. And so we're all in. Uh, we have an exciting event that's coming up, uh, in, in April, on April second to be, to be, to be, um, April second, uh, two thousand and twenty. And that is the Taste of Mayberton. It's gonna be from, uh, ten AM to five PM. However, we're gonna have a parade that starts at nine AM. And so I'm asking all you folks that are, that are in the audience, please come out and support this fantastic event. It's going to be a showcase of all things Mayberton and the surrounding area. We're gonna have the, uh, we're gonna have vendors, we're gonna have food, we're gonna have music. We're gonna showcase our local schools, we're gonna have a place for the kids, we're gonna have music, and we're gonna have elected representatives, uh, uh, there with us as well. In addition to that, in addition, uh, we're gonna be spotlighting Cobb County. So some of the questions that came up today, where, uh, Madam Chair referred folks to, uh, to, to, to department heads and so forth. You will have an opportunity to meet some of these department heads on April, on April the second. I'd like to thank, uh, Maxine Wilson and Michelle Bradley, who are leading the charge for the Taste of Mayberton. And it's amazing how tirelessly they have been working. I'll also like to thank all the folks who are helping them, including the volunteers. Uh, and also like to thank the, uh, our sponsors. The, um, our presenting sponsors are More Diagnostic Lab, which provide, uh, uh, services dealing with, uh, COVID and such, right here in Mayberton. We also have John Thornton, uh, Chevrolet Buick GMC, who is also a, uh, uh, is a sponsor, a presenting sponsor. And we also have the Cobb County Parks Department. They have been phenomenal to work with. And so I wanna give a shout out to the, to the Parks Department. I also wanna give out a shout out to, uh, to Public Safety and in particularly our, uh, our Priest and Commander, Major Fisher, who has, uh, been just absolutely fantastic, uh, working with us on the logistics so that, that, that they will go very, very well. Uh, we're also proud to announce that former Governor Barnes is gonna be, uh, a part of the Grand Marshal, uh, Court along with our own Jeff Paget. And many of you know Jeff from, from the Adopt a Mile, Picking Up Later program. And in addition to, to our presenting sponsors, we also have, um, uh, TNS Taxes right here in Mayberton, that's a platinum sponsor, SAE School, uh, uh, for creative design. Goal sponsor is, uh, Trust for Public Lands, who is going to also be, have an exhibit to showcase the, uh, the upcoming Riverlands Trail. That's gonna be built here in Mayberton that, uh, Madam Chair mentioned, uh, earlier in her presentation. And in addition to that, uh, we have Flock Systems and Barnes and, uh, there's Cobb Chamber, Westside Bank, Charles Schwab. And in, and in addition to that, the First Christian Church of Mayberton, which is gonna be leading a, um, a group of, um, uh, uh, churchgoers in the parade. And so we, uh, just wanna thank a, all the participants. We're looking forward to a fantastic day, a well-organized day, and come out and have fun. Lastly, I can't, I can't get off, and I'm sorry, Michelle, I've probably gone over, but I can't, uh, get off without, uh, saying thanks to the Mick Board and the folks who serve on the board, dedicate your time. Also wanna thank, um, our, our, our membership because without our membership and our sponsors, we couldn't be doing any of this stuff without you. So thank you all very much and have a great, great, uh, weekend ahead. Look forward to seeing you at Taste of Mayberton.
Thank you, Ray. That was, uh, that was, that's a tough act to follow, but I, I'll try and I'll, I'll be brief. So first and foremost, thank you, uh, Chairwoman Cupid for spending your time with us this evening. Thank you, uh, to everyone that was out there that took a ti- time out of their evening, uh, to tune in and get some, uh, valuable information. Um, the only thing that I will say is that with, with regards to how we move our communities forward, this is a, it really takes a truly a communal effort. So one of the most valuable resources aside from time is the people that are involved. So if, 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 if the mood strikes you, uh, depending on where you are, uh, we definitely invite you to, to, to come out or at least get some more information with regards to the All-Stell Community Task Force. You can always email us at, at our email address, which is allstellcommunitetaskforce@gmail.com. We meet on the first Monday of every single month. And we are, right now, we're still doing it virtually because we wanna remain cognizant and be COVID safe. Uh, so you can find us, um, at our, at our Facebook page, which again is All-Stell Community Task Force on Facebook. So reach out, uh, get involved, find out what, which, where your interests are and, uh, start making a difference or continue to make a difference in the community, and I'll turn it over.
Thank you, I guess last, but I know we were very, uh, pressed, pressed, uh, pressed for time and everything. Again, as everybody echoed, I wanna thank you so much, Chairwoman Cupid, for coming out here and being a part of this. I know your schedule is very busy and hectic and just for you to, uh, take your time out to be a part of this, uh, partnership between Mick, All-Stell and, and Powder Springs, show your concerns for the community all around in Cobb County. So again, uh, kudos to you for this, taking the time out to be a part of this. And I wanted to thank my partnership again. Like you said, we all in here in District Four, we're, we're striving to move together and to make a change as we come together to do these form and other events real quick. But I'd be remiss not real quick to mention this. One of our partnerships that we work for, uh, Sting A, who's been taking kids on college tour for the last twelve, fifteen years, is doing a line dance, uh, jamboree over here at the Ron Anderson Building Saturday at eleven AM. The flyer is posted, please take a picture of it or anything, if I wanna come out and be a part of this, it should be a fun time. Again, this, uh, line, that line dance is to get tickets, to help sponsor kids to go visit colleges, to make a difference here in, in the area. So again, my hats off to, uh, Geneva, Van Hossen Sting for hosting this program. And again, as my cue to just say goodnight to everybody, thank for all of the, it's participants, everybody that stayed here. We just wanna thank you and look forward to us doing some more events and collaborations down the line. And Chairwoman Cupid, please keep up the good work and know you got our support here in District Four. Thank you all very much.
Take care. Good seeing you.
Good seeing you too.